Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf. We made the whole meeting. Today is Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's five o'clock P. M. Thank you all for joining us. We start tonight with a presentation from our DBO, the Downtown Business Organization. This is the twenty-five-year report. For that, we welcome the Executive Director of the Downtown Business Organization, Ryan Jancy, Downtown Bettendorf.
Very good. Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I'm Ryan Jancy, Downtown Bettendorf Organization, and we are here to recap the FY twenty-five work that we accomplished in downtown Bettendorf. So the following presentation will look at how we promote business and economic growth, infrastructure and livability, advocacy and promotion in downtown Bettendorf. As we discussed, you already know, I'm Ryan Jancy, Executive Director of the Downtown Bettendorf Organization. One thing I'm proud of in two thousand and twenty-four, I was, I received the Leadership in Place Management, and this is just a certification, not just a certification, but it recognizes place management professionals who demonstrate the knowledge and skills needed to manage and lead place management organizations. It also gives me the ability to work with other professionals in this organization and see how they handle issues and work with city councils. So it's a great feather in my cap, and I'm proud to say that I'm one of probably a hundred in the, in the nation that have discreditation.
Good job.
Thank you. So here, here, thank you. Here's the FY twenty-five board. Seth Rowland is our Chair. Shelley Ridgeway, who has joined us today, is our Vice Chair. I won't name everybody on here because I'm pretty sure we know everybody on here, but I think the Board or the DBO does a good job of making sure we have big businesses, small businesses, east and west side of the bridge representation. And a lot of these members have been there since two thousand and nineteen, and they continue to give back to this organization. So it shows that they believe in what we're doing, and we, and we thank them for everything that they provide to downtown Bettendorf. So the DBO runs what's called a SMID district, self-supporting municipal improvement district, leads redevelopment and revitalization efforts, makes improvements that benefit properties, businesses, and the community within the district. This includes upkeep of public spaces, capital and physical improvements, marketing events and management, partnership with city and other public entities, activities advancing the SMID's goals, and recommendations on public spaces, services, business growth, and events. If you recall, just last year, we renewed the SMID for SMID number two, and for a SMID to be implemented, we need a minimum of twenty-five percent of the value, I'm sorry, twenty-five percent of the population of the district, which represents a minimum of twenty-five percent of the value, and we took it to a city council here with fifty-three percent of the population representing seventy-one percent of the value. I think that says it in itself right there, that these property owners know what we're doing down here, and they're behind it, and they're willing to sign these petitions, and they're willing to put their money where their mouth is. We also expanded our district to the north with Lord's, and then to the east to include another business down there. So our district is growing, and people want to be a part of what we're building down here. So what is place management? These are the three pillars that I work in: business and economic growth, infrastructure and livability, and advocacy and promotion, and we'll kind of touch a little bit on each one of these as we go through the presentation here. One of our biggest assets we have down here is our facade and interior grants. I'm pleased to say that we invested nearly thirty thousand dollars, was totaled close to two hundred thousand dollars of facade and building improvements for these three businesses down here. We work with a committee, a facade and interior committee of property owners and business owners that recommend these dollars be spent, and then the Board ultimately votes on them. And I think the committee does a really good job of making sure that we are using our dollars in a sensible rate, right? We want to take projects from good to great, and we're not here just to help put a roof on a building or do some stuff that is regular routine maintenance. We want to physically improve the building and make it better, not only for the citizens of Bettendorf, but for the tax rolls so we can receive some more dollars from those taxes, right? We continue to invest in businesses and encourage businesses to start their business in downtown Bettendorf. So Deluwa Taco Shop, you'll notice we're seeing some development on the east side of downtown, which we like to see, former McDonald's, Deluwa Taco Shop, Bulldog Arms, once a renter, is now a lease-to-own property owner, which we like to see, and then Royalty's Beauties Parlor in the forward, Tango Salon, Sooth and Renew, and Paragon Interiors is now calling downtown Bettendorf home at the TBK Bank Building. We do have a cleaning ambassador that works probably fifteen to twenty hours for me down here, litter collection, weed control, working on the Oculus up there, make sure the trash is picked up out of that, and then the I seventy-four off-ramps in the urban park. This is something new that we're maintaining, right, or as a, as an entity, as a city. So we want to make sure that we are finding things that need to be addressed and making sure that they're well-kept, well-clean, safe, well-lit, and all that good stuff. And so that's what our cleaning ambassador is down here, being recognized and making sure we're putting our best foot forward in downtown Bettendorf. This year, again, we partnered up with the city for the extreme cleanup. We continue to do this during a weekday because of the support we get from Public Works. I don't know that any other city will show up the way that your Public Works does, right? So we have Packer trucks down here. We have employees from Public Works. They bring heavy equipment. We had over a hundred volunteers down here. The DBO supplies lunch that day. It's just a great community-building initiative, and we, we thank you for the support from Public Works on that day. In addition to that, we have the self-watering ground pots, the fifty self-watering hanging baskets, and some flowers in the bumpouts and, and some other ground pots in those bumpouts, and those are all maintained. Well, they're maintained by Louis, but they're all with the leadership from Wallace's, another Bettendorf business that shows us some love down here. Infrastructure and livability, I'm not sure if you guys have seen it. I'm sure you probably have, but we wanted, we invested heavily in, in the arts this year in downtown Bettendorf. So we had over fifty applicants for this downtown mural, if you will. We did it down to four finalists. Those four finalists created four separate murals, and ultimately we selected arches by Bill Gustafson, who is a Rock Island teacher in the Rock Island School District. He's an art teacher over there in the high school, and we think, just as overall, this piece did a real good job of showing where Bettendorf has come from, where we're at, and where we're headed to, and I think it just fits in perfect with, with what we're creating down here. There is some hidden things in there. Bettendorf High School and PV High School is in there, Waterfront Convention Center, the Water Taxi is out there, and the Bettendorf Brothers, and it's doing its job, right? It's drawing people down here. We're seeing people taking pictures in front of it, and it's helping with our placemaking initiatives. In addition to that, public art, we have two other spots that are DOT land that is very underutilized. We wanted to utilize it by beautifying it. We added a sculpture at the foot of the bridge. That one is called, "Mirrors in the Object Are Closer Than They Appear," and then Starbuds is over at Be the Light Park, and these will be part of rotating initiatives with QC Arts. Each year, there'll be a new sculpture put into these spots. And then we move into advocacy and promotion, something I do twenty-four seven down here. This year, we were able to partner with Parks Department to create the Be Downtown event, if you will, where you can learn about businesses, learn how they, how they create things, how they work. We partnered with Ace Auto to have classes down there where young car owners can come in, learn how to change a tire, learn how to check their oil, do all that simple maintenance. And then we also had an event at Adventurous Brewing, taught people how to brew beer, you know, what goes into brewing, what it takes to run a business. And this is just a good way to get people into downtown Bettendorf, right, to experience what we're doing down here, build relationships with customers, and, and figure out, and show people why these businesses have been in business for so long down here. Another initiative is our, is our Deck the Downtowns. We had over twenty-eight businesses. We hired artists to create a holiday display in their window. Many of those artists have created, have found work year-round now for this, so we're advancing their initiatives. And then we also partnered with Gildas Club and the Blessing Tree down there that goes up every year at Be the Light Park, another activity that is activating that space in the winter months and giving a place where people can go down and remember their loved ones and spend some time just remembering and celebrating the holidays. Be Downtown, I feel, was another great success down here. We continue to grow each year. It's a free, fun, family event. K and K is involved. Again, I want to thank the police chief down here. The fire department and Public Works were on, on display down there that day. They were down there working with the community, being involved in the community, which is exactly what we want this event to do, right? We want people to, to be a part of this community and help it grow, and this event is leading to some great things that are happening down there, and we're excited for what can happen possibly in the, in the future with the West development, which is why we hold this event down at this park. We're trying to get peoples to understand that, that we're building something down here with the urban park and the potential for development on the West Bridge. So there's a lot more to come as we continue to grow this event in downtown Bettendorf. We also were a part of Alternating Currents this year. If you are not familiar with Alternating Currents, I highly recommend that you do become familiar with it. It is growing to become a nationally-recognized event, which is why we want downtown Bettendorf to be a part of it. So we had, to kick off the event, we had live music in K and K, and we saw fifty, sixty people come in there for the event and ended up buying stuff at K and K, right? So you're hearing live music on a Thursday, and you're buying a new lawn chair. It's not, it's not the usual type of event you would have, but it's what is, what is special about Alternating Currents, right? It's unique. It's something new, celebrates arts, and, and it introduces people to new things in their community that they may not recognize or may not have been a part of in the past. And then we also partook in Muralfest. This year, we had Dominic Laporte from Ontario, Canada, who came down and did this piece on Bulldog Arms. Again, a placemaking initiative that is just activating the east side of downtown. We've had great social media comments on this post. I think I've had colleagues on, that I worked with that are envious that we got the best mural, and that's also, you know, a heads up or a nod to the, to the property owners and myself, obviously, and our Board for making sure that we selected the proper mural or the proper artist to put something in that is going to work with our brand and work with our downtown. When we continue to advertise and promote downtown Bettendorf, not only locally but nationally, and visit Quad Cities, we want to promote that it's, that we're thriving down here, right? And we're, we're still in the middle of our renaissance. It's a great place to live, work, and play, and we encourage not only businesses to open up here, but people, residents, to spend more time in downtown and see what we're creating down here. And then, again, my job is easy because of you people up there and because of all these people sitting up here. I wanted to put names on here, and I'm sure I missed some, but there's, I'm on a, I'm on a texting relationship with most of these people on here, right? Whether it be the Chief of Police, whether there's public safety down here, they, they are taking this community involvement or being part of Bettendorf to heart, right? And they, they follow your lead, and it's evident in the work that they provide for me or the support they provide for me and the pro-business that they, that they provide for downtown Bettendorf. So as we continue to move forward, we're going to look at, we have seventy-five thousand in facade grant dollars. As you see, we only spent thirty thousand last year. I'm going to challenge the Board to possibly look at ways we can get more dollars into these businesses down here. We want them to encourage bigger and better investment. We're going to explore wayfinding signage now that our urban park is finished and our construction is finished. We're looking at a new bet sign underneath the bridge, another interactive piece to bring people downtown, similar to what Rock Island did in their park across the river. And then continuing to work with the investors on the West Bridge over there as we get ready, hopefully, for some development on the West Bridge and Leech Park. And we just look forward to continued communication and collaboration with city council and stakeholders in downtown Bettendorf to continue to move our downtown forward. I want to thank Seth for his continued involvement. He's been with, with us from the, from his infancy, and he will be stepping down his chair, and Shelley has moved into the chair this year for FY twenty-six from Acentra, and Shelley is here in support. And then in addition, Baron Sexton, after eight years, has stepped down to move on to other things from TMI, but we are happy to, to welcome Larry Golf from Ace Auto, another longstanding downtown Bettendorf business, and we're excited to have his input in the downtown Bettendorf Board of Directors. So with that, I'll leave it. If there's any community, any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but I'm looking forward to continuing to work with this, with this council and with this staff and with these stakeholders to keep pushing our downtown forward and making a thriving downtown Bettendorf.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan?
Just a comment.
Lisa?
Ryan, just since this has started and to where you brought it, it's just incredible, I think, you know, just the activities. So big thanks to the Board and the businesses and the leadership you've shown. And that mural at Bettendorf Arms is so cool.
Yeah, it's really nice.
It's neat.
Yes, Scott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would echo what Lisa said, and just seeing Kyle Carter in the back and what, over the last twenty years, as active chamber participant and, and somewhat engaged throughout the process, you guys have gone to the next level in terms of learning, spacemaking, placemaking, and defining, but it's, I mean, just your energy and your enthusiasm here at the DAIS translates into the storefronts, and people want to be a part of it because it's active and engaged and it's programmed properly, but it's the enthusiasm of, and you're selling hope to one extent or another, like tomorrow's going to be brighter, and it is really because of the work that you guys collectively have done in partnership with the staff and so forth. So thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. We'll see you soon. Thanks for being here, Kyle, and the folks. It looks like we've got two of an hour with Kevin here from the DBO. We appreciate that. We know why Kevin's here.
To support the DBO with something else that's coming up.
Awesome job. We appreciate you all. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda items, I and J. These are resolutions approving a site development plan for lots four and five, FG eighty Holdings. This is for our community development director, Mark Hunt, who's making his way forward, and we do have the developer who has joined us, Focus Real Estate Development, Kevin Kelner.
Hey, Your Honor.
Welcome, Mark.
Somehow I got the load chair tonight. Holy smokes.
And they're all kind of low. Looking forward to budget season.
Twenty-five years old.
I want to see where they fall off.
Has a request for one new chair.
Twenty-five. And only one. I'll be up here.
How long does a chair last? It's twenty-five years.
You've probably been tracking a little bit of change here, so we just have two site plans coming forward now. One was removed by staff at the request of the developer. So case numbers, twenty-five zero three five and twenty-five zero three seven, lots four and five in FG Holdings, sixth edition. That lot one is, if you saw the old packet, has been removed. Just to orient you real quick, of course, you can tell where the golf complex is by the bright colored targets. Lot one was under consideration, withdrawn, as mentioned. Lot five and lot four are what we're going to talk about here today. The applicant is Kevin Kelner as Focus Real Estate, requesting a site development plan for a boarding kennel at lot five and for indoor storage at lot four. The Board of Adjustment has approved special use permits for both of these projects as they both required them. Just want to orient you a little bit, too, because it's a little hard to see on the upcoming slides, but lot A is kind of this amorphous-shaped lot that wraps around lot four and the bottom of lot five. The, the south part of that's used for some stormwater control and also the north part, too. You'll see that when we get closer into the slides. Of course, we always want to check land use and zoning. We're compliant both for my future land use and current zoning, and then the current zoning also allows both proposed, proposed uses as special use permits, which have been approved. Focus first on the kennel here, so lot five, lots of contours and things on this map. So again, just orient you real quick. We're looking at right here. The proposed kennel is about ten thousand square feet, just a little under. Access is provided via Sports Drive. That kind of comes up from this direction, and Game Day Drive is this other private drive to north. Both of these are private drives. We've got parking spaces at thirty-three with two ADA, stormwater detention provided at the existing pond in the south part of lot A. Here's what your landscaping will look like. It's a pretty small site, so you're getting eight-point-one tree factors. That goes up to eight-point-five. Remember, this is also going to bring in this next lot into play, too. So you really have landscaping across both lots here. Here's your elevations, sticking with the kind of metallic facade, black and tan, and some browns, kind of the accent colors that have been popular out there so far. So it should match the existing elevations. If you look at the indoor storage piece, a larger site here, eleven indoor storage buildings, total of one hundred and eleven thousand square feet, a little more. We have vehicle access from private drives from the south here and from the west here. So these private drives, I think they're going with Game Day for this one and Sports Drive for this one, gets you into this complex. There is kind of an office area here, not so much for storage, but for an office to kind of run rentals and, and that, take payments, that type of thing. Four parking spaces associated with that. No real parking spaces, per se, in the actual development. I guess you could pull and unload vehicles, which you're probably used to, but you're not going to have long-term parking. And we're doing some detention work at the north side and on the south side for this property, and a six-foot high chain-link fence for security, which is standard. And just your landscape plan here, again, your tree factor's nine, a little more than the previous site total. I guess you're getting, what, seventeen when you put the two sites together. Your driveline or private drives are shown kind of in white here and here. And your elevations, you know, not much to look at for a storage building, but they do have similar color on the facade as the other buildings that we've talked about. We had a positive staff recommendation that's part of, for both cases, that's part of the report in your possession. It was at August twentieth, at Planning and Zoning Commission, where it was, where both cases were positively recommended to this body, and again, where it took off the lot one case. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Questions for Mark. Lisa?
Could we go back to the site? The, the piece to the east, I can ask Kevin this, is that the piece Scott owns that's just undevelopable? That's between Forest Grove and then your site? To the east of lot A? Just that squared off red? Yeah. You know that we had been talking about, Decker?
Van Horst.
Yeah.
Is that the Van Horst property?
I'm saying Scott, just so you know. Is that that piece? Is he still on that?
That where the cursor is, is the Van Horst property?
Is that still his?
Yes.
That's the one? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Other questions?
That's it.
Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. Are these two parcels within the area that's covered by the Urban Renewal District in the tax increment financing ordinance?
They both are, yes.
Thank you.
Any other question? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the dog kennel going to be, have soundproofing in it or whatever? I, I guess I'm concerned that you're going to have barking dogs, and with Iron T with open, open facility at the Iron T, are they going to be listening to dogs bark all day?
Yeah, so that's one of the externalities that the Board of Adjustment looked at when they approved that special use permit, and I think their analysis came down to the fact that the dogs would be at the rear, kind of more towards Interstate eighty, and you've got sound coming from Interstate eighty, sound coming from crowds and baseball activities, and then sound coming from music and the actual hitting of the golf ball. So all of that together probably kind of lowers the, the significance of any one sound, and I think that led to their approval of that.
Other questions? Nick?
Thank you, Your Honor. Did Board Adjustments discuss outdoor storage? So I see it says indoor, obviously, but is there going to be RV, trailer, storage included on the, maybe the most northern end, based on that drawing?
I don't think so. I think all the storage is inside. Now, you might be able to pull one inside.
Sure.
Might be large enough, but I don't believe there's outdoor storage. And the developers here, if you can, wanted to speak to that, I'm sure you do.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Greg?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I, I just realized that this, this would be within that TIF area, and my question is if, and Kevin, Kevin's wonderful. He's a great guy, and nothing against him at all, but if somebody were to come in and say, "We want to put in a kennel or an outdoors, a, a storage facility, we want to TIF it," would we say, "Okay"? I, I, I'm just, I have nothing against kennels. I have nothing against storage facilities, but, I don't know, maybe, I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but.
It's a little different than, than a standalone because of the development agreement in the area. So Chris, can you maybe refresh our recollection about what we had previously agreed to with the developer?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. In two thousand and twenty-three, when we entered, entered the DA with two entities, FG eighty Holdings and Middle and Forest Grove, the Middle and Forest Grove developer is primarily for the, for the Iron T, and FG eighty is primarily the commercial development surrounding it.
Right.
The DA did contemplate that there would be additional commercial projects that would come, and that would be included within the, the TIF district. The agreement was clear that if there was something that was not taxable or that was residential, that it would not be, but the agreement did contemplate that there would be additional commercial development. That was unclear at the time, but that was contemplated under the DA. So I, I think that this is consistent with the agreement that was entered previously.
So there was no restriction on what kind of business? Some, but not?
There, there were certain obligations that, that the developer was to take on, including a, a hotel, the Iron T, and Jeff might be better able to answer the specific infrastructure that was required by the, by the developer, but those were the, the big-ticket items. And then FG eighty was the developer that was to build out the surrounding commercial businesses within the area.
Jeff, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, Councilor Curran is right on all fronts. There was the second hotel, the Iron T, and the contemplation of the indoor baseball, softball facility that they provided as well. When we looked at this at Development Review, I think one of the, the hardships or challenges facing the developer with these two areas in question primarily are sewer and access. So I believe, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Kelner, but I think he's had a difficulty in marketing because of the topography and the sewerability of these parcels. In order to find a development that's more complimentary, if you will, it would require a better sewerability that is just really not possible there. So he was trying, I believe, to find uses that still provide commercial tax value, but also do not rely heavily on sewer needs. So I think that what he's tried to do here is fill these two locations in with something that's not high-traffic, not highly parked, and does not rely heavily on the sewer need that may be there on the other parcels.
Thank you.
I think that would go in, in concert with, with the special use permit when you look at C three, which a year ago or a few months ago, we allowed the, the storage units to come into that, that use and not be industrial-only. And one of the things we tried to do in the special use was identify those C three places that were encumbered otherwise. So they weren't good for other commercial developers. They weren't attractive, but you could still use the storage in that, in that area. Nearness to the interstate, I would add, is another limiting factor on this property. You have the interstate, you have the sewer building, and then you have the access. So that, that led to that special use permit consideration.
Craig?
I can get something first, Your Honor.
Okay, Frank?
Go ahead. Thank you. Mark, could you point out the detention areas one more time, particularly on this map here?
Yeah, the real obvious one is the one that's there. So, you know, this pond's existing, and it's taking that most southernmost drainage. There's a new one being constructed in the low spots, and it's being hauled out and created in this area.
Okay. Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. A follow-up question on that. I assume these detention ponds meet our new standard?
Thank you. Greg, Jager?
Thank you, Your Honor. As others have said, Mr. Kelner is a fine developer. And after I left city employment for a little bit of time, I worked with developers trying to get projects approved, and I learned what maybe is obvious to everybody else: wishing can't make it so. That is, we may want to have a Ford manufacturing plant in Bettendorf, and we may tell the best developer in the world, "Go get it," but there, it may be impossible to do. In this case, the city has established an area with a specific vision in mind. Many times over the last year, staff has beaten me about the head and shoulders, telling me that this is a regional sports destination, that we should be doing things to promote the regional sports destination. All of the cul-de-sacs that are in there are to assist the development. The fourteen-million-dollar pedestrian bridge that we recently approved is to promote the regional sports destination. We set up TIF increment financing to give We set up TIF increment financing to give the developer tax dollars back to help us with this vision. And these both will qualify, according to my question, for tax rebates to the developer. Over the course of however many years, the development agreement says that the developer should receive the payments. But I don't see either of these two uses as promoting that vision. And I realize this is site plan development, so I've been trying to rack my brain. What site plan changes could be implemented or could be recommended that would make these two uses more supportive of the vision of a regional sports destination? And frankly, I can't think of anything. I'm not comfortable with the intermix of these uses. I realize we're here focusing on site plan concerns. I can't find a site plan adjustment that addresses my concern. And when you take it away from this specialist discussion, I do fear that average citizens are gonna say, you're giving tax dollars for a used store at in Bettendorf? I realize that cannot be our main focus this evening. But given that I cannot figure out how to integrate these uses with the vision, I'm going to ask the council to place these two items on regular agenda so that I may vote no on them. Your Honor, I won't be here tomorrow in anticipation of League of Cities. I will be in the Des Moines area, but I will call in electronically so that I can vote on these two matters.
So I hear a motion to remove consent I and J from the consent agenda and place them on the regular agenda for consideration tomorrow night. Do I have a second?
I would second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Do you want me to do that by roll call?
I think this is a acclamation, Your Honor. I didn't hear any nays.
So we'll take it up tomorrow on our regular agenda. Anything else on this particular item? We're gonna go Nick, then we're gonna go Jerry.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I would, I had two thoughts, actually. First one, to address some of the comments made by my fellow council member down there. I think Lot Five is, I think it's a really great use. I've actually had a number of people call me inquiring about a kennel or something for dogs. I think what we I think what may be undervalued is the amount of people that are coming into this area that bring that have pets that they need to do something with is very, very real. We've, like I said, I've talked to a couple of people out in the Fifth Ward that had inquired about doing something like this. So I would say that one ties to the, we could probably tie it to the the vision that'll make this even more accessible for teams and for families to make this a, you know, viable option for them from a tournament location. I understand the the perspective on on Lot Four, so I'm not gonna comment on that. The one question I do have is what what are we gonna do with Lot A now? Lot A becomes, I mean, we're gonna have two retention ponds, north, north and south, and then we have this space to the, you know, to the east. Any thoughts or how we approach something like that? Because if the property further east, does it, does it get absorbed? How do we want to look at that from a planning perspective?
Lisa, you had a comment?
Well, I don't know if this ties into. Do you mean that little part of Kevin's? Nick?
Yeah, the sort of that north, south. Yeah, that's exactly right.
To Nick's point, I think that may have to be like connected either down or, you know.
Right, to something else to make it work.
Yeah, I think that's part of what may be in in the works.
Okay, then, well, can I jump in?
Okay.
I think Deckard's probably sweating right now. Kind of with Greg's comment, as far as this whole recreation area, Forest Grove is to the east. And it's to the east of that rectangle that I was just quizzing Kevin on. And I know there was some brief discussion a while ago about that rectangle as far as maybe scoring up Forest Grove. But I know we came into some issues talking about that. So that's why I was asking about that rectangle. But then with Nick's comment, you know, who knows, maybe if we ever acquire that, maybe that could address that, you know, triangle off Lot A. You know, maybe we don't ever get that, so that might be a pipe dream. And then to Greg's comments, Lot Five, I agree with Nick as far as the kennel. And then on Lot Four, I think the storage is a good idea because that's kind of a crappy piece of land to develop. I mean, it's all the terrain back there and all of that. And then if you think of it to the west, we've got all that multifamily now. And so I can see it used for, you know, the kennel and the storage and all that. So so then back to Greg, yeah, we've got the whole recreational area, but I can see tucking those two different uses kind of back in there. And then we're gonna add that whole recreational area to the east as far as Forest Grove and stuff, which I know we've gonna have talks coming up about the uses within that. So that's my comments.
Anything else? Jerry?
No, thank you, Your Honor. A question and then a comment. My question is, Lot A is still owned by the developer, correct?
That's correct.
So the developer will do the maintenance on it, whatever is needed. And then my other comment is regarding the TIF, it's my understanding that we still get debt service portion of the taxes to the city. So it's not 100% taxes rebated to the developer. We get the, we get the debt service portion.
And the 25% to help us build the Gateway Bridge.
Correct. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Jeff, did you have something? I'm sorry, I wasn't looking at you.
I apologize, Your Honor. But Mark, if you could please go back to the aerial and to address Councilmember Pelzinski's question or comment about Lot A and Councilmember Browns as well regarding the Vent Horse property. The one reason I would say that Lot A looks a little wonky as well is I think Mr. Kellner's tried to maximize as much of Lots Three and Four as he can that are buildable. Lot A, it doesn't really render well on a flat 2D rendering, but the topo, it it's as Lee said stated, it's it's rough terrain. So there's really not much that can be done with Lot A because of the topo and the rough terrain. And then that rectangle, that's been kind of a sticking point. I know Mr. Kellner and others have tried to acquire that entire property. But that north rectangle is very difficult from a terrain perspective as well that made that those acquisitions a little challenging too. So I just wanted to point out that that looks a little wonky because the majority of that is just undevelopable land.
Anything else? All right, we will take these items, formally consent I and J up on the regular agenda tomorrow night. Let's look at the remaining consent agenda items. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
Anything else on consent anyone would like to discuss before we approve its placement on consent for tomorrow night? None? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all remaining consent agenda items.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We will take up our consent agenda minus items I and J as well as whatever one K that was removed by staff tomorrow night. Does anybody have any thoughts or questions on the items to appear? Any questions for staff on those before we take them up tomorrow night? All right, we'll keep the items to appear as such, adding consent I and J. We move to our strategic plan update, and for this, we welcome our City Administrator, Dr. Blaine, Assistant City Administrator, Jeff Ryder, and all of the department heads for their work. We say thank you very much, and now let's hear about it.
Thank you, Your Honor. We wanted to make sure that before we get into goal setting in late October, that we had one final update on the strategic plan items. I didn't intend necessarily to go through every one of them per se. You had the update.
I'll just scroll to the place in each one of them where there's the information exchange.
There she is.
The new stuff. Keep going. There we go. Let's get the.
So obviously, our number one item has been the referendum, and there's been a lot of work, as you all know, and you've been a part of it, and you've been invited to a whole bunch of it. We've been providing the information workshops and and Doug and his team have been providing tours. We have a whole bunch more tours set up for folks, and then Fire and Police have an October 4th downtown open house as well. And we have two more informational meetings on the 24th and the second, one at the waterfront, one at Acentra. And the YES Committee is working diligently on their business. And so I think you are aware of almost everything that's gone on, but this would be the time to ask us any questions about that. We, again, we continue to provide information, and we think that it's going probably as close to the plan as Bray Architects laid out. And with Estes Construction, all of the folks are participating. We continue to participate in our monthly meetings, and we'll do so up and through the project, so.
Questions on the project?
Any questions?
All right, wastewater.
I think we're pretty much just up to speed on the wastewater treatment plant. This was part of the subject of the budget last year and the continuation of the funding needs that we've put into the budget. Brian and his team, particularly Brent, are actively involved with the city of Davenport in the joint 2080 agreement. And Jason's been very active with Davenport on the funding needs, and all of those have been identified. They're all in CIP. We have the funding sources for those. So we feel pretty comfortable that you are aware of all of the work that's happening there. Currently, there's a federal grant that and some state grants that have been received to fortify the plant. That construction is underway so that we hopefully won't have to be boating into the into the plant during high flooding. We can say, I think with some great certainty, that all the improvements that we've been making over the last five years have had a great impact on the plant in terms of inflow and infiltration. The low water numbers have have stayed pretty constant, and floodwaters and or INI issues are not nearly where they were. And we have not had, to our knowledge, any backup in any portion of the West End like we used to have. And and I think Brian's team has done a remarkable job of making all that happen there. So I think you're well aware of here, and and any one of us, particularly Brian and or Jason, could talk about what their teams have done, and I'm not sure if there's anything you guys want to add.
Questions for Brian? All right, Middle Road. Talking about it tomorrow.
This is, you know, as as we've talked about, this is the restoration of Middle Road from a two lane to a four lane with some turn lanes and additional roundabouts from Forest Grove at least to the Surrey Heights Station. We think that the the course of valor that we're working on is the potential TIF ordinance for an urban renewal project there, utilizing the TIF from the new developments there to fund this. We we think you're aware of that, but we're trying to fast track that so that we can get this urban renewal in. In fact, it's on your plate for consideration. So we think you're well aware of this one. We don't know if you have any questions, and I don't know if Jeff wants to add anything here.
Questions? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Federal funding to help out on this? I mean, at one point in time, I thought we were fairly certain we were gonna get some. It appears as though that that that's fallen by the wayside.
Well, we got the, we got the 1.8 million for the design, and we've been in regular conversations with Representative Miller Meeks for an earmark and her program. She's indicated to us we should submit the entire amount of the of the project for consideration. Everything got pushed back one year last year. So our intention is to put in the entire 16 million. Earlier, her staff had indicated to us that her total allocation, I think, is somewhere in the neighborhood of about 20 million. I don't know that we're gonna realistically get 16 of 20 million, but we think there's a real good chance that we can be in the five to to 10 range, depending on other prior priorities. But our plan is to submit the entire 16 million for that earmark. And it's not in, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, this was not in the Surface Transportation program because we were fast tracking it. In order for that to take effect, we would have to go back, amend the STP program at ByState, and it would push it back probably four to five years. So we think that the the course that we're on, both seeking those federal dollars and utilizing TIF dollars, is gonna be much more expeditious for us.
We'd be that far out anyway, wouldn't we, Brian? We've already got projects spoken for for the next two to three years in the STGB. You got a five year, so we, if we played our cards right and nobody else had something big, we might get into year six. And we've decided as a council to take a different approach because we can't get started and piecemeal it from year six to 12. We gotta kind of move. I think that's what you guys have talked about. We'll find out tomorrow. Yes, Greg?
I apparently have been putting out some bad information. Where did I, where did I hear 28 million? Was I dreaming or something? I thought.
For Middle Road.
For Middle Road widening. Is that?
Yes, yeah, the number you were you were referring to was on Middle Road from Forest Grove all the way down to Crow Creek.
That would four lane the whole thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All the way down to Crow, oh, okay. So what, I'm sorry, so what's this?
What are we putting in with Miller Meeks?
Well, we were putting in, at the time, the project was 16 million. We're we're putting in all the the entire project, but I don't think her allocation is gonna gonna be able to cover all of that.
Right. I'm sorry. So what, what, what area does this 16 cover?
Well, the original project was 16 million. Maybe I'm referring to a different, a wrong number.
We were actually going for the 16 million from Forest Grove down to Hopewell, which actually includes a roundabout at Hopewell and also a roundabout halfway between Hopewell and Forest on Middle Road. And the, yeah, correct. Jeff just pointed out too, and the reconstruction of the roundabout at 53rd.
So we're gonna ask Miller Meeks for the entire amount that is available for the project, but I believe her allocation is not going to solve that. So I don't know if that makes sense.
This is a sort of an in the weeds kind of question. If we put in and ask for 28 million and we get 6 million in order to use the grant, are we then committed to do the full 28 million?
We'll have to find out. I don't think so because it's more of an earmark.
If it would make it easier for us to finish a portion of the project by putting in a $16 million chunk and having the congressman get an earmark for a portion of that, maybe the difference would be easier for the city to figure out how to finance.
Yeah, it's, it's.
That's an in the weeds thing. I just, I just asked the question.
And and we don't know that we'll get any dollars from her. I mean, she's facing an election. You know, if she doesn't get elected and then we're talking to another person, we don't know that where we fall in those priorities. So we're working under the assumption that we're gonna have to cover probably most of this from our ability to tax increment if we if we can get federal dollars to offset that portion. That's what we're gonna try to do.
Exactly. Nick, then Frank?
And correct me if I'm wrong, thank you, Your Honor. We had discussed the responsibility of developers coming in with these extra roundabouts and some of these things that are gonna be required. Where do we stand with that? And what percentage of that funding will, of this project funding will come from those those new projects that are coming out there?
We would expect that we would do that by development agreement with those developers. We we have not assessed in a long time because the policy today, if I'm correct, I think I am, is that where a road already exists, we don't do an assessment. It's where a new road doesn't exist, where 53rd went across. We did a special assessments. But they're definitely gonna have interest. But they're definitely going to have interest in driveways, curb cuts, roundabouts, all those things that they'll attach to their property. Our thought is, and Jeff can jump in here, our thought is that we would likely do that as part of a development agreement with them as they ask us to participate in their project as the way to provide some funding.
Craig? Thank you, Your Honor. You beat me to it, Nick. But have we had any discussions with Mercy One Genesis towards participating in the roundabout at the hospital?
They've not produced, to my, our knowledge, any building plans, any road plans, anything yet. They're still, they've identified it, but we haven't seen anything come forward in any fashion at this point that gives us an ability to have that conversation. Mark, do you want to chime in?
We have the conceptual plan that helped with the rezoning, but we don't have a site plan for consideration yet, and that's probably what would be used to make that development.
And have had no discussions.
And, yeah, and they haven't come back, so.
Okay.
Jeff?
Thank you. Just a couple of points. You likely saw this in the urban renewal update that we're doing, and I appreciate Chris, Councilmember, or excuse me, Councilor Curran and Jason Schatz's assistance with this. We have put in there 28 and a half million to cover the cost of this project over three phases, beginning in 2028. So, we're pretty comfortable in the amount of increment that's going to be generated that if we needed it to be there, we believe we would be able to finance the 28 and a half million net of any other proceeds or support we may get. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
Can we put this back in the goal setting? Because I know I stuck it in it one time. We had talked about this, and I don't think we've talked about it enough.
Developer contribution policy. Yes, I'm sure we will take that up again this year. We've been doing that in the past.
Thank you.
Greg?
I'm sorry. So, the 28 million is, like, that's the whole thing?
Yeah, you're okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. I just want to make sure I wasn't fibbing somebody. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yep. Anything else here? All right. Let's move to the West District. If we can share anything, we may not be able to share much.
I'll let Jeff handle this as he's been lead dog in the sled strong here.
Strong. Yeah, thank you, Decker. You can see a number of updates here. We've been continually working with the development team. The developer has a multi-residential component that is kind of the anchor that's driving the majority of this. That multi-residential development piece is really the piece that we're trying to solidify here by the time we get to goal settings. We have a DA to consider. The reason that's so important is that density in that population there is driving the commercial uses that are going to be in that West Bridge District as well. There's a couple of really critical commercial pieces to that development that really wanted to see, and they're desirous of the multi-res piece being there to drive that population down there, if you will. So, the developer's working hard to solidify that multi-res developer. It's a company out of Wisconsin that's incredibly reputable, so we are working through that. We've had some minor successes or wins. I think I said this in goal setting, there's a lot of bureaucracies involved in this area. We've been able to get some right-of-way, excuse me, we've been able to get some easement from CP Rail about 25 feet to allow for additional parking, which we're very excited about. We had originally asked for 50. They came back with 25, which is still a big win. We now have the DOT that's provided us the parcels, the remnant parcels down there. They've had those surveyed. Those are going to be able to be disposed of here very, very quickly. That took, I don't know, Brian, two years. It took quite some time, which was a real challenge. We got approval from FHWA to run the rail, or excuse me, the new road under Interstate 74 for that secondary point of ingress egress. So, we've had some of these minor victories that are really helping support the developer's interests in getting those things done. We have had initial conversations with the core. They are very, very supportive of the development, building up on the north side of the levee wall. It just adds more security and more stability to that levee wall. So, they're very, very supportive of us building that up. The great part about that, or the unique part, if you will, is it provides then parking below or into that grade level, if you will, which is a very unique feature that's been done in some other markets. And then it provides then for the development to occur at jetty height, or excuse me, at levee height, which is very, very cool. The second component with the core is the jetty. We are contemplating a jetty out in the river to allow for calming and some calm boat access in there to add that amenity as well. So, there's been some minor victories, all of which are not as minor when it comes to working on them. But I asked the developer as recent as last Friday, can we please have something to consider as far as a development agreement? And he was pretty comfortable that we should have something around that goal-setting time. So, a lot of things come into play here right now, like we've all seen. Cost of construction have been something that they're very considerate of. The four-month, five-month delay on the State House relative to tax increment financing and property taxes kind of give everybody a pause for cause here from January till about May. So, very little work was done in that window of time just to see how that all fleshed out. And then ultimately, that'll be another discussion point as they go back into their goal-setting and their budget works, budget session in January as well at the state level. So, we are trying to get this to a place where it's comfortable for everyone come goal-setting or the first part of November there. So, that's the hope.
Any other questions? Greg?
Is this area covered by the downtown district overlay district?
Yes, sir.
So, is the use restrictions that are in the downtown would also apply to this ground?
That is correct. And it'll also be in the DBO SMID area as well, and the developer is agreeable to pay that SMID property tax to further the mission of the SMID as well.
Your Honor, as the council's probably aware, I'm not jumping up and down with the idea of paying tax dollars for a kennel and a used store. I'm wondering to what extent it might be beneficial to put an overlay district on all four corners of Middle and I-80 so that we don't have this thing hit us again, if the council feels that such a thing is warranted.
Certainly something we can talk about. Other questions here? All right. Let's move to the Parks Master Plan.
You received the plan. We made the plan be received and filed. John's language says adopted. We didn't adopt it. We received and filed it. So, the council's seen it. We felt comfortable receiving and filing it. We're working off of that plan, and the items that are in tonight's and tomorrow night's agenda for approval were part of that, and we feel pretty comfortable that that's on its way.
Questions? All right. Moving to the I-80 Master Plan.
So, this item, just somewhat similar to what Greg just asked, we've been kind of delaying this a little bit, trying to figure out where we're going. And I don't know if Jeff wants to make any comments about this, but we've kind of put it on hold until we get through some of that zoning stuff as well, so.
Yeah, not much to add to that, Your Honor and Deck. Actually, Mark is carrying the bucket here for us on this one, but, yeah, it's one of those things that's a little bit in holding pattern right now. We have actually discussed, Councilmember Jaeger, an overlay district out there, and Mark and I have made this conversation known to the developer that we're considerate of an overlay out there as well. We, like you, I think, all would like to see, not only for the existing uses today, but second, third, and fourth generation uses, making sure that that area stays intact and it is, in the future, set out what it was intended to be. So, we have discussed an overlay district in that corridor.
Questions here? All right. We move to...
Actually...
Policy agenda? Do we want to talk about any of that, or should we open it up? Questions?
This one, I think this one kind of got moved a little bit, just this one particular item. Because I think that, as I remember from the sheet, I think grant capacity was the next item. Make sure I'm right. Yeah, the overlay was on the management agenda, so if we can move to grant capacity, and we'll come back to that in a second.
Okay. Grant capacity.
So, Jason's been kind of taken the lead on this, and we've been having conversations with Waston and Associates about the potential for them to run down some grants for us, and they're local. We think that might have some opportunity. So, Jase, you want to talk about this?
Sure. Thank you, Decker. I've had a couple of conversations with Linda Waston and Waston and Associates about how we might use their firm to kind of expand our capacity for grant writing as a city. And there's a couple of different paths we could take, but she noted the importance of actually identifying potential grant projects well ahead of the funding need, sometimes two or three years. So, I thought we'd get and put her in touch with John Burns and Parks and talk about the Forest Grove Park projects. Perhaps there's a Leach Park project when we learn more about how West Bridge will be developed. But if we can get those types of projects in front of her with enough lead time, she's confident that they are qualifying of many different types of grants, and they can help us in identifying those and then ultimately writing and hopefully successfully being awarded those grants. But, right, I think the most important thing for us to kind of take away so far is, you know, identifying these projects with plenty of lead time and working hard at the grant writing process well ahead of the start or the need for funding.
And part of the issue with, at least in the last four or five years, under the guidelines that most departments had, we, our low-to-mod income census tracts did not make us eligible for almost every grant that was out there. And the new administration has not, they've eliminated a couple of the areas that were previously potentially available to us. But typically, right now, where we have the strongest opportunity is in transportation projects and some mitigation projects that Mark's working on. But until those rules get recodified, right now, you really have to have a very specific project that you have in mind that you might be able to get to. But in terms of where we've been able to maneuver, we've not made much headway here, except in the obvious, there are some sewer grants, but typically, that's where we spent the money at the wastewater plant. So, this may change, but it hasn't changed for us yet.
Questions? All right. You want to go back up to number one? Do we want to go through each one of these or just ask some questions?
So...
We talked about developer financial contributions.
Keep going, Michelle.
Green Bridge?
Green Bridge, we have nothing to report on Green. There's no update for any progress on that site.
Okay. Flood?
Yeah.
23rd?
Proen areas?
I think you're pretty well up to speed on the flood prone.
We just had part of that on the info.
Based on some of the info that we've provided on the key updates.
Leach Park, we chatted about. Isle Upgrade Project.
There's nothing new to report on anything happening at the Isle.
Okay. Why don't you take a look at the management agenda? Top priorities, and if there's anything there you want to hit, great. And if there's questions that people have on any one of these, great. I don't think we have to go through each one unless there's questions, right?
I think we've given you a briefing on the citywide information master plan and how that's working.
We worked on the Isle American. We're up to speed there. We know what's happened at I-80. You just got some information on the TBK Bank Sports Complex, likely not, right, Greg? We're informed. Management, anything here?
We know what we're doing, Your Honor. I think.
Monument signs, I think the change in the sign ordinance is clear, and we've made that change, so. City Center Motel had their problem, and they were able to hire a structural engineer and get it fixed, so that went away.
Cyber security, we've talked about. We just got an update. FEMA, we just got an update. EPR Financial Software, we just purchased more of that. Anything there that we need to talk about? Jason?
Not particularly. Things are progressing nicely. As you know, we just implemented the utility billing in August, September, I guess it is September, boy, probably in August then. Getting very, very close on the payroll piece in coordination with Kathleen and HR. And once we're over that hump, I think we'll stand down for a little while, Your Honor.
Catch your breath?
Yeah, that or his staff is going to kill him.
We got an update on the zoning ordinances last week. Quiet zones. Somebody want to tackle that? We know the plans and specifications are getting done, and we're, once finalized, we want to get started.
Do you want to talk about quiet zones and where we're at?
Yeah, so basically, we're just reviewing the preliminary design plans from Snyder and Associates and just reviewing those documents and whatnot. And then once those plans are finalized, they will be sent to CPKC for their review. And then once we get concurrence from them, and then we do already have it worked into the CIP, so then we'll move forward with those once we get approval from the railroad.
Is that something we do a couple at a time? As we have the money? Yeah.
But they do all the work. We don't have any say in any of that, and then we get built, so.
Well, we don't have to do them all at the same time.
I don't think we can get them all done at the same time.
Yeah. Alley reconstruction, we're up to date on that. Want to touch on the business licenses?
Well, our hope is that we will do this as the year end occurs, where we would move people over, and Jason may want to talk about that.
Well, this is a little more complicated project than we originally thought when we undertook it. There are still some licenses that we will continue to issue and manage for certain types of businesses, but I think we've collectively decided that the retail business licenses really aren't doing what we thought they were, and we will probably discontinue those with the expiration of the current, the current round of those.
Okay. Questions there? As we move down community-wide, active shooter program update. Any questions for Chief Scott? All right. We completed the library strategic plan, website refresh, furniture. Any questions for any particular department head on their report? Greg, did you have one?
Not any department head. I just had a general question.
Go right ahead.
I just want to make sure I got this. Let's say I disagree with quiet zones or whatever. Are we going to approve this whole thing, and then that's it?
This is just, this is just an update.
This is your update on the...
In Lyle, we put together a strategic plan, and this is each...
I thought I heard somebody say that we're going to vote on...
No, 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 no.
Okay, okay.
Well, at some point, we will. Move those forward. Any questions for any department heads on their reports?
Any department heads want to say something about their report?
Yeah. Any department have something, has something that they'd want to share?
We dare you. Your Honor, I would just mention the C Click Fix, using that more as an intake methodology for lots of things, public works and code enforcement-wise has been, I think, good. I think it's just a tool that was on the shelf we had and just kind of been using it more. So, I didn't throw that in here in the packet. It was pretty minor, but it's something I, it was just nice to find and be able to bring that forward, so.
Good. Anything else from any of our department heads? All right. Shall we close out our discussion on this agenda item? All right. We'll move to any items to be added for tomorrow night's consideration by council. I have none. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hello.
We stand adjourned.